The order, we want to do some recognitions before public comments. So I'd make a motion to amend the current agenda and place eleven point one in front of nine point one. Any second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Danielle, I'll turn over you.
We are now going to invite up Dr. Ben Hettison for our student recognitions from Pierce Hall.
How about now? Yeah, I can hear myself. Okay, thank you for coming, everyone. We'd like to recognize, we had seven summer graduates this year, and we have one that is present that we would like to recognize. So when I call- Soon, now that he's graduated. Jack is also a great singer and musician. He creates and performs his own music. He said he would perform some now, but we won't, we won't put you on the spot. His counselor at Holt said he was one of the most likable kids she worked with last year. We congratulate Jack on earning his high school diploma as a two thousand twenty-two Holt graduate. Congratulations, Jack. All right, let's try that again. So let's start with some public comments. So this board certainly wants to hear from its district residents and its employees regarding district-related matters. So it has provided this set amount of time for residents and employees of the district to address the board in public comment. We ask that speakers will follow the requirements of Board Policy four twelve. Speakers are asked to model and be civil and respectful for our district students. Board members will not respond directly to questions and speakers during the public comment period and instead only listen. With that, Dan, I'll turn it over to you. Kick it off.
Okay, thanks, Jason. First up, we have Renee Hankey.
Yeah, okay. Good evening. I am requesting that Regulation twenty-six-ten be reviewed titled Behavioral Expectations, keeping in mind age-appropriate misbehaviors and the child's ability to understand their own actions. I am asking for reasonable and logical consequences. In Regulation twenty-six-ten, behaviors from classroom disruption to assault have a one hundred and eighty-day suspension. There are no guidelines on how to determine how many days suspension is appropriate or if suspension is appropriate at all. This is not reasonable. The severity of the action, the child's age, and the child's ability to understand their own actions are all things that need to be considered to determine an appropriate consequence. Regulation twenty-six-ten also states, middle school and high school students that are suspended have the opportunity to make up assignments for a reduced grade receiving up to a sixty percent. In other words, if a student gets a one hundred percent on assignment, their gate, excuse me, their grade will be reduced to a sixty percent as a punishment. This is unreasonable. This is grading a behavior, not academics. Students will be better served when academics and behaviors are documented separately and appropriately. If a student has stray days but has men, many behavioral, excuse me, behaviors documented, this tells a more clear story about acting as academics and not documenting behavior. The way the current standard is laid out in Regulation twenty-six is setting students up for failure. Please review this regulation and make appropriate changes. Thank you.
Next up, we have KB Hubbard.
Without ink, okay. First and foremost, thank you to all our teachers, paras, staff, librarians, bus drivers, lunch staff, support staff, and administration. Make sure when people are listening, like, let your staff know how much you appreciate them and send them a thank you today. I had hopes to start this school year off with a little less noise, yet here we are, having groups encourage to harass staff members by promoting and filing police reports over books in their school libraries by single, simple click of the button. Not only are they challenging the books in our library, they're also challenging books in the county library. Some of the people in the room do not even have kids that go to this district. Just because you're a taxpayer in this district and you ran to rave at every meeting and council meetings, do not grant me special privileges or authority over other students, staff, parents, or my child's education. I do not want random people without educational background or experience trying to influence or control what books my child and others can read, what curriculum they can learn, and what clubs they can join, or openly being a part of whatever community they would be a part of. They have already attacked teachings of accurate history, social-emotional learning, diversity, equity, inclusion, and every other acronym style of teaching has been attacked. What is next? Are we gonna cut science classes? Are we gonna stop teaching that male sea horses have babies and African tree frogs can actually change their sex because it's not part of whatever they want? All of these actions are not for the protection of our students. This is about punishing power and controlling others. The side, divulge of personal religious beliefs and political rhetoric by people in this room should not be affecting my child's education. I implore the board to put an end and stop to extremists and focus on supporting our amazing staff and drowning out this noise so teachers can continue to be the amazing people they are and create a safe and welcoming learning space for all students of every community, of every, everything. To others who are listening, please speak up and speak out against this because I'm really done being forced to parent with the, with this group. So thank you. Please support your staff, send your staff, if they, you know, do everything they can so they know that not everybody is against them on this subject and that they know that they have support from the parents of their students. Thank you.
Next up, we have Amy Benninghoffen.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to address the district's vaccine exemption policy. Emails sent by parents this year that wish to file religious exemptions with the school district were met with a lot of resistance, per usual. However, many parents have learned about the law, Missouri State Statute one-six-seven-point-one-eight-one, section three. It reads, "This section shall not apply to any child if one parent or guardian objects in writing to his school administrator against the immunization of the child because of religious beliefs or medical contraindication. In cases where any such objection is for reasons of medical contraindication, a statement from a duly licensed physician must be also provided to the school administrator." Therefore, a lot of parents that learned about this, they decided to send in their signed letters stating that they would like their child or children exempt from the required vaccines based on their religious beliefs. That's where the story should end. Unfortunately, that is not the case. Instead, they were sent emails back telling them to contact the manager nurse, who then sent an email back stating, I quote, "If I, if I, if you read further into the exemption information, on this statute, it does explain that this information must be on the Department of Health card stock." Then she continued to explain Wentzville's policy of requiring these exemption cards anytime there's a new vaccine required for a specific grade. However, come to find out, I did some digging, what she was doing was she was taking the actual Missouri State law statute and smushing it together with CSR, which is Code of Regul, State Regulation. The difference between a statute and CSR is that the statute is voted and made law by legislation. CSR is written by bureaucrats. I would also like to point out that CSR becomes null and void because of the words that are in the statute that state, "This section shall not apply to any child if one parent or guardian objects in writing," et cetera. The district's stance and policy on this matter, it quite frankly leaves the district vulnerable to a lawsuit. It is not my desire to see that happen. But parents are fed up with our rights being trampled on. We will fight back. I suggest the district make changes to this policy right away before a lawsuit is filed. I would appreciate a timely response to my request. Thank you.
Next up, Jen Olson.
My name is Jen Olson. I would like to start by saying, Dr. Tormala, please do not take any incoming criticism personal. You walked into a crap show when you showed up at our district, and none of us hold you responsible for the trust and transparency issues that existed long before you came onboard. We understand and appreciate that you're working hard to fix a lot of the issues that exist. That being said, I ask that you take into consideration the deep-rooted trust and transparency issues that the parents and community members have been battling for over the years with little progress. We have been lied to, manipulated, and ignored for far too long. There isn't a sound-minded person in this room or listening at home that isn't hopeful that this saga ends with you. A wise young man said to me today, "He who controls the flow of information controls the future." If anyone should control the flow of information, it should be the community. Meaning, we want all of the information and we'll sort it out on our own. In regards to Agenda Item fifteen-point-two, the livestream discussion, I would like to offer a solution to the YouTube censorship issues. Switching to Boxcast or Rumble would solve the issue. Rumble doesn't censor as YouTube does, and live streaming is free for content creators with over one hundred followers. With nineteen, eighteen thousand students in our district, we should have no issue gaining a hundred parents or community members as subscribers. Our YouTube channel currently has thirty-five hundred subscribers. My response to the livestream options listed in the presentation are, number one, only live streaming the business portion of the meeting will disenfranchise those who are unable to attend in person or who have grown accustomed to the livestream option over the years and wish to continue hearing the public forum portion of the meeting. Number two, if a third-party service is utilized, there should be no editing of speech as it is an official public record. St. Louis County switched to Boxcast due to their YouTube channels, YouTube videos of their county council meetings violating the YouTube policies. Number three, if we record, redact, and post to YouTube later, this would be considered altering an official public record, and it is unlawful as it violates free speech laws and the Missouri Sunshine laws. Anytime a public body sets a tide, sets aside time for a public, for the public to address the body, it is considered a limited public forum during which greater free speech protections apply. I do not believe this option is lawful as it would violate free speech protections as well as the Missouri Sunshine laws and could create unnecessary legal issues for the district. Last, in regards to the elections, electronic signup process, I ask that this be voted down. This process will allow for one person to sign up several people if not fill all ten spots. Google Forms can be easily hacked, and aside from all of that, this is one more layer moving away from the transparency that parents desperately need from this body and this administration. I've emailed this information to all of you as well as my comments in greater detail earlier today. Thank you.
Next up, Glenn Becker.
Welcome and thank you for having me. I'm gonna ask the board to please make a formal announcement and if you're gonna allow the E-Hall Pass system to remain at Holt High School. Teachers inform students, and I have many parents texting me this, that students now have to take their Chromebooks to the bathroom in order for the E-Hall Pass system to work. This is in direct, direct contradiction to the email that I received from the district and I have sent to this board on August thirteenth. For the parents at home, you can see this email. It's posted at W S D R four dot com. That's the number four. So please, I would like to know if this board is gonna stand behind the E-Hall Pass or bathroom monitoring system that's going in at Holt. The second thing, Policy five-two-four-zero states that you have to do a fire drill the first week of your school. I have parents sending me pictures of school bags and jackets and everything else mounted between the desks in the aisles of the classroom because kids don't have lockers. The first fire drill that you do or the first active shooter drill that you do and a student gets out of their desk and falls over one of those bookbags, not only are you basically a fire code violation for blocking the exit to a classroom, but you're also putting this district at a huge lawsuit because kids can't safely exit the aisles of their desks because the aisles are full of bookbags. The teachers are telling me they have nowhere to put the bookbags. They have to put them, the kids have to put them next to their desk. There's not enough room in the classrooms. So please reconsider that policy as well, and also I would recommend giving lockers to all the students as mandatory and get the bookbags out of the classrooms. Policy five-seven-one-zero, your data governance policy. I don't think anybody's read it, and I don't think anybody's followed it since two thousand seventeen. There is a, in that policy, it states there's an annual review that's supposed to occur of all policies and procedures in the IT, in the IT realm. That hasn't occurred. I've emailed the board, I've had discussions about the RUP, the directory information, and everything else. It also states that there should be a thorough risk analysis of the district's data networks, systems, policies, and procedures will be conducted annually. That hasn't happened in years, three years to be exact. I've been up here talking about it for three years. It also states under the access policy that directory information, students' information must be divided between what's external and what's internal. I brought, I brought this up with the new superintendent, saying, hey, there's, in your directory information, it states that parents should be allowed to say, I don't want my kid's information going external, but internal's okay. I was told that the district is too big and there's concerns about the district being able to do this, so not this year. We're not gonna look at it. This policy states you should be already doing it. So finally, you have a company that you guys are getting ready to pay a bill for. It's Provision Data Solutions. They provide your online security. Go out and look at their website. They don't even have an SSL cert on their website. Their comment section of their website isn't secure. How can you have a company doing your online security when that company can't even secure their own website? Look at the stuff that you're doing. Thank you very much, and if you'd like to follow me, I'm on the radio. You can look it up at W S D R four, number four, dot com, and I'll be talking about all this as well. Thank you.
Next up, David Lewis.
Good evening, all. Thanks for having me. You know, I, I heard today earlier on about, you know, there's, there's taxpayers that pay taxes that don't have kids, and they're supposed to step aside for some reason. I probably pay more taxes than you. And by God, if I wanna talk here and make my, my voice known and, and argue and debate, that's my right because I pay the taxes. As regards to taxes in general, over a year ago, I was up here and talking about the significant amount of taxes that the community pays to the school board, to the school system, to the school district. The numbers I brought forth were presented by the city of Wentzville in two thousand twenty-one that showed at that point we were on average paying about seventy-six percent of our taxes, not a percentage of the tax rate, but of our taxes, seventy-six percent of those for the school district. For everybody that has students here, well, I guess, you know, you, at least you feel like you're getting something out of it. Personally, I'd like to have that money back where I could put it through the community and do some good with it. And I don't mean to minimize the good that the school district does. I don't mean it that way. It's just, my goodness, my taxes are killing me, man. I just don't understand how you can look your citizens in the face with as rapidly growing as we are and continue to bury us with taxes. I don't get it. I would ask that you take a look at that and see what you can do. Thank you.
Okay, that'll be the end of public comment, and next up, superintendent comments. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Tormala.
Great, thank you so much. Bren's gonna pull up. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, perfect. Bren's gonna pull up a presentation for us, and we're gonna just kind of walk through some visual representations of all of the comments that I made. So we are excited to have started our school year. And so since the last month, we've been able to accomplish many things that are on our first one-hundred-days checklist. And Bren, if you wanna just keep going through the slides for me. If you wanna follow on a daily basis, you're welcome to join us on Twitter and follow at Dr. Tormala W S D. One of the things that we've had since the last board meeting is we finished up our round of safety meetings and crisis plannings with our first responder groups, and we've also met with our SRO leads for the city of Wentzville to make sure that we are ready for the school year. We also had our ribbon cutting for our North Point Middle School, and that was a great event held at North Point and celebrated by many of our residents. We also welcomed nearly one hundred and fifty new educators this year at our new educator summit. And we also held a two-day back-to-school administrator retreat for all district and building-level administrators where we welcomed almost nearly thirty new administrators to our district. We worked with our community to offer a back-to-school fair that was held here at Liberty High School. Our community donated school supplies. Our volunteers were able to pack two thousand backpacks of school supplies that our families were able to come and utilize. We also had many of our community vendors and community partners here providing services, resources, and many other options for families and students. One of the exciting things I've been able to do too since coming onboard is working alongside our schools and our teachers to have the fun back-to-school activities, and I was able to join Piney Ridge kindergarten teachers delivering balloons and welcoming kindergartners back to school. We also held our back-to-school kickoff for all of our staff members, and this was a fun pep rally-style event, and we held a meeting at each of our four high schools. And so here are the, some photos from the Holt feeder pattern. You have North Point, Timberland, and Liberty. And these days were celebrated with speeches from our Teacher of the Year, our Support Staff Member Employee of the Year, our Student of the Year, as well as myself. I gave a back-to-school speech as well. And so Bren's gonna flip over to our Instagram reel real quick to just show you some quick highlights so you can experience some of the energy that we felt with our staff coming back. So it was a great day, actually two days of, of meetings with our staff and just the energy and the excitement to really be back for the school year, to be back to what feels like the first normal school year that we've had in a couple of years. So it was a great event for everybody who was involved. The Liberty High School always has an awesome bridge walk ceremony for their new staff. They invited me to be a part of that, and they also held that for their freshmen this, this Monday as well. And that brings us to our first day of school this week. It was a tremendous day. It's been a great week throughout our schools. I've made it to nearly all of our schools, and I will finish them up tomorrow. Learning is happening, relationships are being built, kids are engaging, teachers are excited, and it's been a wonderful thing to see our schools full and vibrant with our students again. And so a few other updates that we've had. We are growing. As of Monday, our enrollment is up from last year. Our enrollment on Monday was seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy-five students, which is just at three hundred students over last year. And we also held a job fair this past weekend here at Liberty, and that brought nineteen new support staff employees. But just to put a plug out, we have critical needs for bus drivers, custodians, instructional assistants, before-and-after-care assistance for the Shataqua program, our child nutrition, our cafeteria team, and our noon lunch duty. And so if you have anybody that might be interested, please have them reach out. That QR code will take them straight to our application, and we will get them in for an interview. And then just as a reminder too, the first couple of weeks of school are always a challenge for our transportation department. As drivers learn new routes and ensure students get home safely to their proper destination, bus times may vary during this time. And so please be patient as our drivers familiarize themselves with our routes and the students in their care. And just over this week too, between Monday and now, our times to getting all of our students home are decreasing. We're getting home faster. We're adjusting routes to make them more comfortable for our students as well. And so adjustments will continue to be made over the next week or two as our ridership settles in and we are able to adjust as needed to make sure that our times are shorter and that our students are able to get to and from safely. And then, one of the things that we're excited about this year as well is actually in the consent agenda, and I'm gonna just talk real quickly about it because it connects with two of our board and district goals this year. And so I'm gonna talk real quickly about our Leader in Me program that is on the consent agenda, and it's a process for developing student skills and the capacity for self-leadership. And this is built on the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People and is grounded in personal goal-setting for students where they set WIG goals, which stand for wildly important goals. The Leader in Me is a direct alignment with our academic achievement and our improving culture and climate goals here in the district, and we are focusing on creating a culture of student empowerment and aligning our systems to drive our results with academics. It's not a curriculum or a program. It's more of a process of teaching individual leadership skills and personal goal-setting. And we will engage in this process slowly and intentionally, bringing schools onboard as they are ready and as we have the staff capacity to do so. We do have schools within the district that are, have already started using- We do have schools within the district that are, have already started using some of these, um, strategies and are excited to move forward. And so with that, we do also want to make sure our community has an opportunity to learn more and understand about Leader in Me as we begin to move forward. So before we bring on additional schools, we will provide parent information nights as well. And then finally, the last thing I'm going to leave you with is when I talked about our back-to-school kickoff days with our staff and they were so, um, powerful and full of energy, we focused on the importance of relationships and improving our climate and culture and creating a supporting, supportive and positive place for students to learn, for our staff to, to work and for our, for our community to really come together around that, what we are Wentzville means to us. And so a- as you've heard us state last month, and I've already said it a couple of times today, improving climate and culture is our, one of our district goals. And, um, I'd like to share with you just real quick a video that we shared with all staff at that back-to-school kickoff, um, around chains and links.
It was the summer of two thousand and seventeen. Roberta Ursay and her family decided to take a vacation. They were going to the southern tip of Florida, Panama Beach, to be exact, where for a few days they were gonna rest, relax, and enjoy the sun. Now, a few hours into this vacation, Roberta's two boys, eight and a half and eleven years old, decide to go out for a quick swim in the ocean, but then they didn't return. And Roberta started to get worried. She started walking up and down the beach trying to spot them amongst the crowd. And she said, "That's when I heard them screaming from the ocean. Help, help. We're stuck. We're stuck." Her boys were drowning and like any mother would do, Roberta dives into the ocean to try to save them. The boys' two uncles, they see what's going on. They dive out there. A few strangers get involved. And unfortunately, as it happens so often in situations like this, two drowning kiddos turned into several drowning people in a matter of seconds. Now, a little ways down the beach was a woman by the name of Jessica Simmons. Jessica and her husband were out for an evening stroll, enjoying an ice cream on a seemingly random night, when down by the water they saw people that were gathering, pointing out to the ocean. And at first, she thought it was a shark, but when her and her husband ran down to the water, they realized that people were drowning. And without hesitating, Jessica starts facilitating this human chain, desperately convincing everyone around her to start linking arms. And one by one, person by person, they created eighty different unique links that got all the way out to every single one of those people who were drowning. And everyone was brought back to the shore alive. Amazing. Here's the deal. If you were to look out at any given high school at any given time, you would see hundreds of kids who are drowning. Drowning in their stress, drowning in their anxiety, drowning in the intense amount of pressure they put on themselves to be perfect. Even the kiddos who on paper have it all together are drowning. And unfortunately, the problem's getting worse. So what's the solution? I believe it starts by creating chains. Chains of human connection so that when, not if, but when, students get caught up in the undertow and the messiness that is high school, that we have people that are out there to bring them back to the shore. So what does that take? Number one, it calls for a chain maker. A Jessica Simmons, someone who is not only gonna see that there's a problem, but who's gonna actively start doing something about it. Maybe you're the chain maker. Maybe you're that teacher who has that charismatic personality that every student connects with. Or maybe you're the student who wants to start that club that advocates for more respect. Or maybe there's somebody who is currently drowning in your life right in front of you. And whether you have it all figured out or not, you know it's time to step up and get involved. I don't know. Maybe that's not you because here's the deal. It's not for everybody. Not everybody is made to be a chain maker, but maybe, maybe you're a link. Maybe you're the bus driver who greets his or her students every morning with a smile and hello. Link. Maybe you're the teacher who stands outside his or her classroom and high-fives every kid, even the ones that never get noticed. Link. Maybe you're the student who sees the kids that aren't being noticed and says to them, "Hey, sit with us at lunch today." Link. Think about it. It took eighty different links, eighty different people to get out there to save those drowning humans. The truth is, there are tens of thousands of kids who are currently drowning in this moment and there's nobody stepping up for them. And the consequence to this is that these kids, they start to lose hope. They become overwhelmed with loneliness and they feel that the only way to release the pain is to hurt themselves or in so many cases, hurt others. Here's what I'm saying. Every kid needs a chain made up of multiple links from multiple people, from multiple facets of their lives, from family members to teachers, to administrators, to youth pastors, to as Roberta Ursay would say herself firsthand, sometimes complete strangers. So just remember, whether it's as big as saving somebody from drowning or as little as giving a few extra compliments, those moments of human connection matter. Those acts of kindness make a difference. Those selfless moments of compassion, they serve as a link. If we get enough links, we can create a ton of chains. And if we can create a ton of chains, I'm telling you, we can save a ton of students. Are you a chain? Or are you a link? Either way, we need you.
And so this is the video that we shared with all of our staff. And it really is about relationships and the moments of human connection and random acts of kindness and selfless moments of compassion and working together to make sure that we are creating the links and the chains for all of our students and for our staff and for our community. And so we are excited for this school year. We're excited to work together as a W S D family and community to make this the best school year yet.
Okay, next up, consent, consent agenda.
Yeah, just real quick, President Bryce, if I may, I just need to pull one item out for a separate vote, if that's okay with the board. So I just make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, removing twelve point seven for a separate vote.
I second the motion.
Matt, you good on that? Yeah, just a, I, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, removing twelve point seven for a separate vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Can I get the board to make a motion on the twelve seven separately? It's just a separate vote, so we can do it now. I can make a motion to vote, move down and just go through the agenda. Twelve seven.
I'll make a motion to approve twelve point seven as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, next up, we need a motion to approve policy oh four one two as presented to begin at, to begin for the October two thousand twenty-two regular scheduled board meeting.
President Bryce, if I may, I think you skipped an item.
My apologies. Okay, next up. We need a motion to approve thirteen point one as presented.
President Bryce, I think this is just a presentation on the program evaluation. Yeah, so I think this is for Bren, if I think that's right. Yeah.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to first say thank you so much for the opportunity to provide a glimpse into the many amazing things that are going on in the communications and community relations department. I would also like to note that I'm thrilled you've selected communications as a top priority for the district as it is incredibly important to both families and staff and the overall success of the district. I look forward to partnering with you and having your support in the coming year. Um, our small but mighty team is responsible for the smorgasbord of items listed on the screen that helps support the district. You'll notice much of what we talk about as I go through this presentation touches on the district's C S I P specifically, Goal Two, Focus Area One of Maintaining Transparent Communication, and Focus Area J of Fostering and Building Relationships with Community Partners to Support Student Needs Outside of the Classroom. Our department also spends a good amount of time supporting our colleagues across the district and in turn, supporting their C S I P focus areas as well. So our department serves both internal and external stakeholders. We communicate internally with our staff and students when needed and externally with families, community members, corporate partners, and others. You can see there are efforts unique to internal and external audiences and then some that blur between the two. Before we go any further, I would be remiss if I didn't shout out the dedicated staff who helped make all of this possible. As I mentioned, we're a small but mighty team. We have Kathy Delacqua, who is over here and you all know, um, and Beth Binder on board. And you will not find individuals who are more dedicated to the success of this district than those two, so thank you to them. And we look forward to filling our multimedia content producer role in the coming week. And we also have an unfilled media resource position. Okay, now moving on to some fun stuff. This past year, our department built on an already established momentum of ensuring we are working with one voice and one visual brand. We want to be purposeful, consistent, recognizable, and respectful. So what do I mean by that? We try to be purposeful. Every item that we put out should have a purpose and it should help our families in some way. We try to be consistent. So, uh, just like our students thrive in a consistent environment, adults do the same and we work hard to maintain a consistent cadence with our content. We aim to be recognizable. We want people to be able to identify the district content without thinking twice. That can help us cut through the clutter of everything that's going on. And we aim to be respectful. Our families are busy. They've got a lot of junk coming from a lot of different places. And we want to be respectful of that and make sure that we're being mindful of how, how often, and when we're sending messaging. So all in all, in every single thing we create and distribute, we try to keep those things in mind. Um, having an engaged audience is critical because when we need to share something of high importance, we want people to pay attention and not tune us out. So we're trying to work those things in to make sure that that happens. Um, the way we accomplish those things is through storytelling. There are so many amazing, incredible things happening in our buildings each day. And we get the privilege and honor to share those things with the masses and really invite people into our schools, um, through media. So, um, let's talk about the website, which is one of our primary methods of communication. Last year, our site had one point two million total visits throughout the year. That tells us that the website is a very important tool that our families rely on to get district information. In order to dive deeper into our user activity and their needs, we installed Google Analytics this past year on our website and we hope to gain an understanding of what webpages our families are using and how they're interacting with them so we can make improvements and make sure we're s- meeting their needs. Up next, I'd like to talk a little bit about another primary communication tool for our district, social media. Our social media is a pride point for our team. This past year, all four of our big social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube, saw year-over-year growth in followers. You can see the percentages listed on the slide. Gray is last year's following and blue is where we landed this year. I wanted to point out that we are continuing to attract people to our content. Last year, even during a time period where enrollment was pretty flat for a couple of years. So, um, we're seeing growth in that people still want to see that content without really necessarily having growth in the district was it, which is positive. Although this year we have growth, which is amazing. Um, so let's talk about Facebook specifically, since it continues to be our largest platform. Last year's Facebook post that performed the best, which had the furthest reach and highest engagement combination, was our little snow day announcement. Um, snow day posts typically do well, but this particular post had a one thousand four hundred and thirty-five percent increase in shares compared to a snow day post from the previous year. It reached more than double our entire Facebook following and won a national award from Ensprow, the National School of Publications Association. So we're proud of that. Other top performers were on Facebook were Dr. Kane's National Superintendent of the Year Award and a couple of athletic achievements, um, all of which reached more than twice as many people as the total page following. So they spread far and wide. Oh, um, okay, so I've got one more thing that I want to share about Facebook before we move on. A key indicator of success in communications is engagement. It tells us, do people find the content we're putting out helpful or meaningful? I took this screenshot last week and if you take anything away from this presentation, I want you to soak in this slide. Um, I took it right before the board packet was due. It gives you a good idea of what we're trying to do as a communications team. Here you can see that on this particular week, we significantly outper- performed our neighboring distri- districts in engagement while simultaneously having fewer posts. That tells us that our content that we're putting out is quality. And I'm not always claiming that it looks exactly like this, but, um, this is what we strive for every single week. So you can look at the number of posts. I think we only had five posts compared to some of our neighbors with seventeen and in the teens and our engagement was significantly higher still than those that were posting significantly more than us. So that shows us that the people want to see what we're putting. Um, I also want to mention that our district has the largest following of all St. Charles County school districts in all four of the main social media platforms. So. Moving on, one way our district tells its story is through photography and videography. Imagery is a great way to capture emotion and give people a look into our schools, as I mentioned. Here are a few of our favorites from last year. Our department is also responsible for supporting the district's needs, um, when it comes to design. So we do stuff for social media, postcards, flyers, brochures, forms, all of those fun things. And speaking of design, we supported a handful of our schools in revamping their logos. They each have their own unique elements with their mascot. And then we had some consistencies with the circle and a similar font so that we can kind of have consistencies across the schools while also having their own unique brand. And here you see Green Trees, uh, little facelift. Another one of our primary ways that we communicate with our staff and families is through e-newsletters. We produce Inside the W S D for our families, Team W S D for staff, and Board Reports for staff and families. And schools also put out individual newsletters as well. This year, we made significant progress in thinking strategically about our newsletters. And I want to provide you with some background information on that so you can understand what we're trying to do. Um, we moved every school in the district under an umbrella of a shared team account this year. Now we're able to better assist our schools in editing their newsletters and speaking with a consistent voice across the district while also valuing the culture that's created in each individual school. We also have more access to school newsletter analytics and just overall increased efficiencies. Um, and then at the start of two thousand twenty-two, we gave our internal and external district newsletters a facelift. They were redesigned, renamed, and we started focusing on fresh content in every issue, prioritizing the things that our stakeholders need and hitting send at a time when people are more likely to engage. We also changed the name of who sends the email, um, from an individual, for example, Bren Kramer, to Wentzville School District. This allows for easy recognition and searchability among our readers. This allows for easy recognition and searchability among our readers. Um, we also looked at cadence, instead of sending Inside the WSD twice a month, we consolidated it to once a month to cut down on clutter in people's inboxes. This was an effort to improve readership and build trust with our staff and families that each issue that we put out is packed with important district information. And lastly, we're working very hard to funnel all important district news into these two newsletters. That way, readers can find what they need in one place rather than digging through a bunch of emails. And I should also add that we tried to be, uh, mindful of people's time this summer and respectful and email them as little as possible. So I hope everybody appreciated that, um, unless there was something super important. So these changes have paid off, uh, in the short time since we've done them. The gray on the slide is last year's viewership and the blue is this year's after the changes. As far as, um, external readership, Inside the WSD saw sixteen point eight percent increase in views after the redesign. Board meeting reports saw an eighteen percent increase in readership and thirty-five percent increase in engagement, which is clicks. And internally, the Team WSD newsletter also grew in readership by three point nine percent. As I mentioned earlier, a large part of what we do is support our colleagues and their efforts. One way we do that is by creating strategic campaigns like our hiring campaign to spread district messages. Um, now that we're using Google Analytics, we're able to pinpoint where website traffic is coming from in regards to our campaigns. So we can see, did this come from Facebook, was it the postcard, was it a sticker, was it the job bear? Um, and this insight allows us to be more strategic in our decisions as to what platforms we use going forward and where we spend our time and effort. Our team also gets the privilege of celebrating the accomplishments of our district and coordinating special events. We were able to have fun with this one. Um, as you may recall, we talked to Mountain Dew, Dr. Kane's Beverage of Choice, and other organizations into sponsoring his National Superintendent of the Year Party, so that was a fun one. Um, up next, supporting C SIP goal two, focus area J of community partners supporting students' needs outside of the classroom. Our team is responsible for the coordination of these events on the screen. Our district awards banquet was the largest that we've had in district history and it went off the, out of hitch, so it goes Kathy, thank you. In addition to the many day-to-day responsibilities that I've discussed thus far, our team managed a significant amount of media requests as well as provided support to the buildings on communications that may have been of sensitive nature. Uh, the CCR team also surveys our community once a year, which supports C SIP goal two, focus area B, in providing opportunities for stakeholder feedback. Last year, we put out the parent satisfaction survey. Here are some highlights noted on the slide. I would also like to give a huge kudos to our building leadership teams in regards to communications at the building level because of all the areas that were touched on in the survey, which there was a lot. Communications landed at the very top of the list with ninety percent of respondents saying that their schools keep them well informed. So I think that's a huge accomplishment for our school leadership. And, um, moving on to the last item that I wanted to highlight from this past year. Our team worked on improving efficiencies. We implemented a work request form um, for any staff member in the district who can easily tell us about the great things that are happening in their classroom or around them and then we can go out and cover it. We also developed a framework for a content strategy that helps us decide what content should go on what platforms. So looking forward, here are some of the goals for the year. You'll notice the first goal is done, which is amazing, new website. Um, we'll be rolling out school sites in the coming months. We also want to better support our staff in all things communications, which we hope will in turn improve overall district communications. We want to create some consistency with our written communication style. We plan to explore avenues for stakeholder feedback. And lastly, we want to continue to establish baseline data in the areas we've discussed so that we can get a better idea of year-over-year trends. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we're thrilled to have communications as a district priority. We're gathering feedback now on what we can do to improve and we'll be diving deeper into, into that in the coming months. So does anyone have any questions?
President Bryce, yeah? Bren, real quick, on the, the parent survey we did just recently, do we do one like that in twenty-one, twenty?
Yeah, so we do a survey every other, well, we do a survey every year. Um, the parent satisfaction survey goes out every other year. And then we have a communications survey that goes out every other year, so they're alternating years. So this year will be a communication survey, which is actually really perfect for you guys' goal because we can maybe add some things if we want to look at them and, um, make sure we, but yes, you can compare year-over-year um, statistics to see how things are moving because we've been doing them for a while now.
Yeah, maybe just to follow up to that, it'd be great to just see that comparison on that survey, the parent one, and then maybe that's a baseline is I'm gonna get this wrong, and twenty-one, the one for the communication, then when we get the results for that.
One year off in COVID, I can't remember what year that was, but yeah, we can definitely look back for sure.
Thanks.
President Bryce, if I may. So I just want to thank you for all your efforts in getting consistency with branding, whether it be a logo or just the written communications. I know that's a lot of hard work and it takes a lot of just communication within your departments and in the schools. And just thank, thank you to all the community events, the most recent one that we did, the back to school event. Um, but I did have one question. Um, as you look forward to the year, are there, are there any ways where we're working or any ideas that you have currently? And maybe you haven't had enough time to craft something, how we can bring, um, stakeholders like taxpayers into our communication? So we obviously need their support for our public schools.
Yeah, we haven't really, to be honest with you, um, gotten too deep into that. We are going to look at some feedback that we got from our administrators as to ways we can do better with communications. And I will be interested to see if there are any themes that kind of bubble to the surface, that might be one of them. Um, but I think they might have some good insight into some of the things that people are needing. We will go back and look at past communication surveys as well and see if something there, uh, is there. But, um, we are definitely open to your guys' thoughts on that as we get into it and we will include you in the process as we, as we work through it.
President Bryce, one more. I, I noticed the, the news making their rounds at some of the schools, Liberty just recently. So I really liked that we're bringing that positive back to school, was a great week to do that. How do we do more of that or what's your thoughts on how we do more of that to bring more regional awareness to the district and it's, you know, it's good things that are going on?
Yeah, there's definitely opportunity for that, um, and we could make it more of a priority. We invite them out pretty regularly, we send press releases on our really big, exciting stuff, which happen all the time. Um, but if there's something really awesome, I'll give them a call and see what they've got going on. So we do work to do that, but we can always, um, work on that a little bit more.
And to just put out a plug, if you're awake tomorrow morning, around six thirty, six forty, Fox Two News is gonna do a flyover of North Point High School and our students and staff will be out there with signs and it'll be a fun little news event as well.
Any more questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Bren.
Thank you.
With that, we're moving on to old business. We need a motion to approve policy oh four one two as presented to begin for the October two thousand twenty-two regular scheduled board meeting.
So Bren, if you can pull up, oh, sorry. So moved. Second. Alright, so Bren's gonna pull up, um, a presentation. As you recall, last month, the board discussed this issue and tabled it, asking the, the administration to go back and to put together all the logistics so we can see it as a full package. And so that is what we're bringing to you today. And so we're gonna take, take you through, we have built behind the scenes the website to accompany this potential change in practice. And so we're gonna, I'm just gonna walk you through what it would look like to register. And so if anybody went to our district website and clicked on the Board of Education tab, it would take you to this section that would give you the public comment um, with our updated guidelines that were updated in June or July, I'm sorry, updated in July. And then it would host this information. And so as you may recall from last month's discussion, the electronic process would go live twenty-four hours before open session was scheduled to begin and it would close thirty minutes prior to open session. If you go to the next, on this slide at the bottom, you'll see the red circle, that's where an individual would go to to register. It's public comment registration. Go to the next slide. This, um, slide basically describes the process and the information that is included in that registration document. And so it does explain that the registration goes live twenty-four hours before and it closes thirty minutes before, um, the, the start of open session. That it follows our current practices of, that it allows for the first ten individuals who sign up. And if you were number eleven, it would give you a prompt to join the waitlist. And with that, all individuals, um, their applications or their registrations are all timestamped and catalogued. Um, and they also will be, there will be a section I'll show in a second for transparency on the website so individuals can see where they are in that lineup. Um, for patrons who do not have internet access, they would also be able to register at the administrative center during that twenty-four hour period ahead of time. And a device would also be available onsite at the board meeting location one hour prior to the board meeting for any last minute signups in that, um, in that time period as well. Um, and then just as a reminder, in this, um, section, patrons may only sign themselves up to speak during the comment portion. Um, they cannot substitute a speaker who is not in attendance and they may not give their time to another individual during their remarks. Um, and they may not sign up more than once per board meeting, which is consistent with what we currently have in practice as well. And so if you then would go to this, um, the areas that individuals would, um, respond to, they would give us their email address and they would give us their first and last name and on here it is noted that the first and last name would be visible to the public um, on that, um, transparency sheet that I'll show, share with you in just a minute. Um, they would select which category applies, if they're a resident, employee, student, or other. Um, they can live their, leave their address if that's desired, that's consistent with current practice. And then they would also let us know what their topic is. And then the last step of the prime up, uh, signup process would be to just, um, review the board, um, policies and guidelines around public comment and check the box stating that you understand the above statement and expectations. From there, then individuals would receive a confirmation email um, if they are the one of the first ten, that would allow them then to receive that confirmation email with a copy of their responses. The next slide. Oh, it's just highlighting that you'll get a copy of your responses on that one. And then after submitting their form, the patrons would receive a confirmation message that states, "Thank you for signing up to speak at this month's Board of Education meeting. Based on the order of signups, you have received one of the speaker allocations during the public comment period. For transparency purposes, you can review your spot in line at our website, site link below. Please note, it may take up to five minutes for the speaker list order to refresh and update with the new submissions." And then, uh, Matthew's information is also on here if there are any questions or concerns. And then going to the, back to the website where an individual would have signed up, the next list at the bottom that's circled in red is public comment speaker, speaker order. So if somebody wanted to see where they are in line, they could click this link. And then Bren, if you want to go to the next slide. Then it would take them to the, um, public comment speaker list and you can see that it has ten slots. It will have a timestamp and it will have the first name and the last name and the topic that individuals are speaking on. Um, and then there's just a reminder that when people do register, it may take a few moments for this to refresh. So then the question is, well, what happens if all ten spots are filled when I go to sign up? And so Bren, if you want to go to the next, one more. Um, then they will receive, um, a, a statement that says, "All spots are filled for the public comment. If new spots become available, you will be contacted to speak. Click on the following link to join the waitlist." And so individuals can choo- choose to join the waitlist and they would go through the same process as before, giving us some, the same information um, as they would if they were going to do the public comment. And then if you keep going, then, um, they would also then, uh, receive, uh, a link to the public comment waitlist that would be created um, in a very similar fashion to the speaker order comments. And then on the homepage, then on the board website, the last item circled in red down there would be the public comment waitlist where individuals could go to see that list as well. And then, um, this would also be timestamped so that if, if the board president decided to add additional speakers or if we needed, if somebody came off the speaker list, then we would go to the next person on this list to add them in. And then the other considerations that were taken, um, as the, um, these items were, um, put in place, uh, again, just being clear that it takes, it could take a few minutes, up to five minutes for those lists to refresh. Um, and if someone doesn't have intera- internet access, then we will make sure that either through the administrative center or he, wherever the board meeting location is, we would have devices available for them to be able to sign up. And then for additional security measures, the URL links and things like that will be changed monthly. Um, if the board decides to move in this direction, my recommendation would to begin this process in October so that we can take the rest of August and the September board meeting again to, um, create awareness about the change in this practice to be able to then put it into, um, all of the, um, communications opportunities that Bren just talked to about, talked to us about like our e-newsletter that goes out for Inside the WSD, highlighting it in the board meeting report for this month and next month, running it as part of a pre-board meeting slideshow next month. And then also making sure that onsite we have notices there as well so that individuals, if they do just come to the board meeting, then they are clear on the process and have an ability to sign up at that moment, so. With that, um, we're happy to answer questions. I know Greg is here up in the sound booth. He has the tech questions if anybody has anything specific. Matthew did a lot of research with, um, talking with other school districts with their, um, board secretaries on management um, of this type of process and I'm certainly happy to answer questions if you have any.
President Bryce, s- um, this is like a, maybe a nit, but I want to make sure it's clarified. In the policy we're revising, we strike email address and leave address, but we're asking for the email address, which then notify. So what's the delineation?
So the only, the change in that policy would be, it, it said email was if desired because we're doing an electronic process in order for us to respond back, um, and follow up, the email address would be required as part of the signup process.
Yeah, I read it, kinda thank you. So, may I continue? Another one, so, so, okay, we talked about this before and, and I had some concerns and thoughts. One of, one of the things that, maybe I'll ask clarity, maybe I'll ask my peers. You know, we've allowed discretion as it relates to the number of speakers on a given day, depending on how many have signed up, how many are here, what, what we may think is a sensitive topic, you know, obviously we had things with COVID that certainly pushed the limits into ten slots. I've always been a proponent of more people speaking if they want to speak and having that. You, so if, you know, we're getting these waitlists and these notifications of waitlists, where's the decision point, if any, that we can take that and flex that from ten to fifteen if we think that is? And how do we then take board action or if not judgment around that in order to flex that up or down? Up, I mean, in this example, and, and where's that spot to do that?
I think that you have a couple of points that you could certainly look at that. So if all of a sudden we see when this goes live twenty-four hours in advance, there are multiple people on the waitlist and we see their topics, we can certainly make this, um, because it is transparent, make sure that the board has a, the ability to see who is signing up even in real time so that you can see who signed up, how many people are on the waitlist. So as a board and as the board president, you can make that decision, uh, prior to open session or at the beginning of open session, depending on how you want to do that, to deci- to say, you know what? We have more than our ten and we would like to include more, we could certainly call them. Um, if you want to make the call earlier, we can reach out and we would reach out to anyone that would be moved from waitlist to an actual speaker position, we would reach out to those individuals, um, as soon as you make that decision and we would be happy to, to accommodate that. Um, the other piece is that with the closing of thirty minutes prior, then we do have that, that time as well to be able to, to send out. To send out emails if necessary.
Yeah, maybe I'm picking, sorry to pick on this a little bit, but maybe I'm picking something that will rarely happen, et cetera, but I would be careful of. Or direction or, you know, some approval of a change outside of a board meeting and within bounds of session. So I, I still am confused at how we would um make that decision. We currently, the policy still reads, it is at the discretion of the president, which I'm comfortable with. But that has been a potential point of contention within the rest of the board on letting that discretion apply here. I am more than comfortable with what you described. If there is a lot of hot topics and the president and you decide to do that, I think it is your discretion to then notify. Cause I'm, I'm a little hesitant of saying like, well, we can then decide, you know, thirty minutes prior and then call a bunch of people to come up here and they're across town. Or didn't think they could speak, et cetera. I just want to make sure that we've got that, you know, live action to make that decision, so.
President Bryce. I just want to say thank you for putting this together. It's very thorough. Um I really like this idea. I think it gives us a really nice, clean process to follow. And, you know, I think sitting in the president's chair, it is hard to like have that discretion with all of us when you just get the, the signup list. And so having that ability to kind of see that ahead of time and know if we're going to have hot topics and um have that discretion and ability to kind of flex on that. I think is really important, so um I definitely support this. Thank you.
I also think it, it, it helps the administration reach out to anyone that's on that list uh in time in advance. To, you know, connect with them, figure out what the problem is and work out issues as opposed to figuring out what the issues are. As soon as the list hits the table and then, you know, uh it's just, I think it's going to help resolve a lot of these issues and get out in front of the issues. And I think that would be a better process.
President Bryce, if I may, I definitely see pros and cons to both sides. Um I think we've heard um some good, you know, arguments on either side. Um I guess my thing with it is to echo uh Director Vice President Goodson about the thirty minutes. That really doesn't give people enough time to, hey, you, you know, you're, you've been notified, you're not on the waitlist anymore. Um especially if when people show up to the meeting and then um they're, or they're not here. So we go through the list and maybe there's only a couple of speakers. That waitlist doesn't really, it's not really applicable unless they're here. And I've always been under the, I don't know, the, the assumption that ten speakers is not a very proportionate amount to our district. If we were a smaller district, ten might be, and there have been times I know that we've had more than ten people sign up. It's not always. Um but just seeing a more proportionate number of, even if it were ten staff, ten student, ten taxpayers, ten parents. And they fit into kind of categories like that, I don't know, just, just a thought to maybe have that number be more proportionate to the representation of. Who actually is in our community.
I know, I support that.
President Bryce, if I may, so just the concerns of some of the peers up here that are. Communicating as far as someone who signs up and is pushed to a waitlist and then they're, they're undecided if they should show up. And then let's say someone didn't show up and then we're bumping them up to actually be here. So it does say in the policy that it is at the board president's discretion to add people like we just discussed. But um Dr. Tormola had suggested that she's going to give two months' time to communicate all this out. So that, I believe, is fair enough time to communicate to anyone who wants to come, that may be on a waitlist. Um that we've said, look, there's a chance you may be on a waitlist, but you could also be bumped up. So even though there's, I, I, I don't agree with that there's not enough notice. I think there's plenty of notice built into the original policy. Um but that's just my idea and as, or my opinion. And as far as what Director Lysak was saying about adding um more speakers. And any of my peers can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's outside of what we're discussing today. What we're discussing today is the electronic por- portion. If we want to talk about adding more speakers, that would be the overall policy. But right now we're just talking about making amendments to the electronic portion. And I'm open to that discussion, I'm just saying, for good governance.
President Bryce. Just a quick comment and just to piggyback off what you said, Director Stoli, um as relates to the waitlist. I think we could see that issue on either side, right? I mean, we have a wait, we have a signup here and people could come and still might not have the opportunity to speak. Because, you know, the signup sheet was full. Um so I think this actually gives us more opportunity than if we have a waitlist to make that decision kind of ahead of time, so.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, yep, Matthew, I'm going to call for a roll call.
Director Bates?
Aye.
Director Lysak?
Aye.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Goodson?
Aye.
President Bryce?
Aye.
Secretary Abbott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up, new business. We need a motion to approve the Desi Hub readiness activities grant contract as presented.
Motion.
Second.
This one was polled for a separate vote, either consent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, next up, we need a motion to amend our current live stream practice to begin live streaming the business portion of the board meeting. Immediately following the public comment period. This new practice will begin in October twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
So with. Okay, so recently the board has updated policies around public comments. And then part, as part of that, a discussion about the live streaming practices was requested due to some recent. Um comments and behaviors at recent board meetings that tend to be a little inconsistent with district policies, practices, and YouTube guidelines. So we're going to take you through where we are, um what some potential options could be. And um engage in conversation on where the board might want to go with this. So our current practice is that we live stream all parts of the open session portion of the meeting, including public comments from start to finish. For each, each regularly scheduled board meeting. And this is live streamed via our district's free YouTube district channel. And so with YouTube, there are various considerations. Um our district YouTube channel is rated for children as the audience. And this requires us to adhere to YouTube's terms and conditions, and they have various other, uh various community guidelines. That fall into five different areas of spam and deceptive practices, which really doesn't apply to our board meetings. Um it does have sensitive content, so if there are um times of profanity or vulgar content. That could potentially breach that um, that set of community guidelines. There's a guideline uh set on violent or dangerous content that also include hate speech and harassment. There's a content guideline around regulated goods, which would not apply to us. And then the last is around misinformation, and they specifically call out elections, COVID, and vaccines. And in their com- community guidelines. So if the district were to be found of not following the YouTube guidelines, it could result in sanctions. Which could, could result in suspending the district's privileges to post or as far as account termination. So with this, we do have um, we've kind of created a chart here of a couple of different ways to look at options. Of live streaming, recording, publishing our board meetings. And so the first row there is with our YouTube live streaming services. So our current practice is to live stream everything from start to finish. The middle-of-the-road practice could be to live stream only the business portion of the gen- agenda, beginning after the public comments. And then the other option would be to not live stream at all. You could do the, the similar types of practices, but do it with a third-party service. That then the district would contract with that service. Um we would review their service agreements um and house those recordings or those live stream and then recordings. On the district's website. That would require a financial consideration, um and we would have to go out to, to bid for that process. Many municipalities, including the city of Wentzville, employ that type of tactic of having the third-party service. And then another option could be to record and post this later. Um and in that situation, it would be to record everything. If there were items that violated Board of Education policy, YouTube guidelines for potentially aggressive or violent behavior. I personally identifiable information, profanity, hate speech, false statements, et cetera. Anything that would violate Board Policy Zero Four One Two or Policy and Regulation One Four Three One could potentially be redacted. Um this has been cleared by our attorney as an option that can be used. However, I have serious concern um from the district administration with moving forward with that option. Um for various reasons, for the additional workload for staff that would have to um take care of that. The timeliness in allowing our community to review the recording after the fact. And then also it definitely would pu- open us up for criticism for editing, censoring, and redacting information. Which um uh would also be a consideration. So these are the options that we have. There may be others that we could consider as well, but these are the ones that um we have in front of us today. So I'm happy to help answer questions or have the board um take it from here for discussion.
Okay, your, your mic's on. No, I'll let Betsy go first.
Go ahead.
She's anxious.
I just have a question. Um so I know you mentioned that some other municipalities, you know, do do this. Have we asked as far as cost, just to have a rough estimate? Like if that was something we wanted to entertain, I'd hate to move forward with an option like that, only to find it was more than we wanted to spend.
Yeah, so at this point, we do not have um any type of estimate for us. Um because many times that's based upon the size of the organization and how you plan to use it and things like that. So that is one of the things that um I have asked for us to begin investigating, to see what options could be out there. So if that is the path that we would want to take, we would want the opportunity to truly get bids and bring those to the board for consideration.
President Bryce. I don't think we've had any violations that have been like reported, is that fair?
No, we haven't had any official reportings at all. To my knowledge.
So, so my perspective here, and I'll just like cut to the chase, I, I, I don't think, it's like a genie, but you put, you pull the genie out of the bottle, you don't put it back. I mean, we, we've created this and many districts have in terms of live streaming, you know, both open, you know, the comments as well as the business part of the meeting. You know, it happened, it started during COVID. It provides a benefit to those that can't be here. It provides plenty of benefit to those in the community here, what's going on. I, I don't support a change on anything in terms of practice, whether it's the comments or the business part of the meeting. I think that service that we provide um is looked at enough and it's something that we should continue to do, and I'd hate to walk that back. If we have concerns over YouTube's ridiculous like code of conduct and policies and it's going to do something, then we should go to something else. I mean, it's, you know, YouTube, other platforms are, you know, judgment-based, and we've seen that judgment be very poor. Um and that's being kind um over the last couple of years. And so if that's a concern, then I would support the district shifting to a different tool. But walking back, you know, this service, if it's, if it's what you want to call it, I think is a, is a poor idea, at least at this juncture of where school boards are. And where the news cycle is for that, and I think it just looks poor on our transparency.
So with that being said, I would agree with you that I think we need to live stream the business part of a meeting. But as far as the public comment goes, I feel as if, you know, people are here to um. You know, get the attention of the board, not the public, and I feel as if a lot of times some people get up to the podium and they advertise something. That fits their agenda, uh and I just think that's unnecessary. I think if you're coming to address the board, the board is the only people that really need to hear that, so we can truly work on those issues. I think there's enough social media platforms that everyone's aware of the problems um that they're coming to talk about. So, you know, let's just keep this a business meeting and let's keep it uh addressing the board.
I guess maybe a counter to that, look, I, I agree that some of the stuff that is set at that podium is completely ridiculous. The behaviors can be completely ridiculous. I don't think anybody's really going to argue that. But at the same breath, there's, you know, recognitions for various things that people come and bring and say positive notes. So it's not all focused on the negative, that are informing the public of things that they want to have said. There's now been a practice of showing that, and so they're anticipating that. You know, maybe that's, you know, somebody, a parent, want to describe a certain situation with a kid or something that's specific that, yes, the board should hear that. And that's why they're here, but the rest of the district and the patrons would like to hear that and what's going on as well. I think there's a counterbalance. I, I get what goes on with what gets recorded up here and who does what and where it lands on the seventeen parent pages that exist here. But that being said, you know, we're, we're not going to stop that anyway, if we don't record it. So I, I think that the positive to that side is still beneficial, and I think just walking backwards in general here is a poor idea.
President Bryce, if I may, so just to extend uh Vice President Goodson's comments. Um so I believe if we're going to stick with YouTube, I actually think that would be fine. But I think we need to be a little bit proactive because they have community standards. I think that we should have um, be proactive and have a backup platform in the event. Because the expectation for the community, if, if that's what we're going to do, we need to be consistent. We just had the Communications Department talk about consistency, so I think we need to be consistent. As far as do we live stream this, do we broadcast this, my feeling is it's all or nothing. So we need to decide what we're going to do and stick with it. And if we want to go back to normal pre-COVID, we can do that, but it's all or nothing. And so where I'm sitting at now, and I've given this a lot of thought, I've weighed the pros and cons, what do we do? And it is a balancing act, um because we want to be transparent. But my direction, and I don't know how my peers feel, the direction that I would say is stick with YouTube, let's be proactive, find a backup for that. And broadcast the entire meeting.
Director Stoli, can you kind of speak to what you mean by be consistent?
Sure, so what I mean by consistent is, I mean, we, we have no control over YouTube, right? Whether they feel and as Dr. Tormola stated, so far to her knowledge, we haven't violated any of their standards. But in the event that that happens, I think we need to have a backup because the expectation is that the community can, can view it. And they're, they, they expect that consistency, so that's what I was speaking to.
Are there any more comments or questions from the board? Okay, with that being said, we have a motion and a second. Matthew, would you roll call this, please?
Director Bates?
Can you repeat the motion?
The um, the recommended action is we need a motion to amend our current live stream practice to begin live streaming the business portion of the board meeting. Immediately following the public comment period. This new practice will begin in October twenty twenty-two. Director Bates?
Nay.
Director Lysak?
Nay.
Director Stoli?
Nay.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Goodson?
Nay.
President Bryce?
Aye.
Secretary Abbott?
Aye.
It's four to three, motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion to have the district review alternative tools to YouTube. And bring that back to the board at its earliest convenience.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Matthew, will you do a roll call?
Director Bates?
Aye.
Director Lysak?
Aye.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Goodson?
Aye.
President Bryce?
Aye.
Secretary Abbott?
Aye.
Motion carries?
All right, next up, we need a motion to adjourn open session and go back into closed session for the purpose of personnel.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye, seven.